I'd like to call, wow, that's really loud. The April 19, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. And can we have the roll call, please?
Marie Jones.
Here.
Carol Mandino.
Here.
Bob Harris.
Here.
Mary Norton.
Here.
Marshall Kemp.
Here.
Ian Sharp.
Here.
And Ricardo Guthrie is excused.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make, this is a continuation of last week's, oh, well, first I'm going to call for a public comment for any item that is not on the agenda today. So if we can, we cannot address, the commission cannot address anything that is brought up, but you can, you can speak if you need to on something that is not on the agenda. Are there any of those kinds of comments? Okay, don't see any. And then the approval of the minutes, we need to motion for last week's minutes.
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And now the public hearing, and this is a continuation from last week's meeting on two items, a specific plan and concept zoning map amendment for NAH Corporation. And I don't know if we have anything from staff, but I wanted to make, I wanted to just address the issue of public comment first, because we did close public comments last week. But if, and we have indeed heard many, many, I don't know, somewhere between 100 and a couple hundred comments between people having speaking and letters that we've received, and I'm sure all the commissioners have really paid close attention to those and factored those in. If somebody does want, when we get to that point, if somebody does want to speak, I would ask that if it is something that we, that you have not already said, and if you have not already spoken, then we would hear your comment. But if it's something that you've, you know, let me just confirm that we really have heard the things that everybody has said. So if that's not necessarily, then we'd like to not do that. And let's see, I think there may have been a question, did you want to ask?
Please make sure you talk into your microphone.
There might be two questions from two commissioners for staff.
I think just what, what I would like is to hear from legal counsel on exactly what we're voting on, what our options are, that type of thing. So I understand that we have two things in front of us. Is it, is it that we have to send it to counsel with a yes or a no? Is it, are there other options? Just want to understand from a legal perspective exactly what we're voting on.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christina Rubalcava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. With respect to what you're voting on, you have the two items, and each item has specific findings associated with it. So you're going to want to make sure that you're basing your decision on those findings. In addition to that, it is a recommendation for approval or a recommendation for denial that the commission will be making on both items. I would encourage the commission and each specific commissioner, particularly if it winds up being a recommendation for denial, to state during the discussion period your particular concerns that led you to, to vote in that way. And that way, when counsel takes this up on May 2, counsel will have the benefit of your thoughts that went into that decision. And if there are, I'm happy to answer these kind of general questions, but if there are more detailed questions, I don't think it's been read yet on the agenda, but it should have been agendized so that we can go into executive session. And I'm happy to answer those there if you want to get into specifics.
And are those the only two options? Can we vote to postpone?
I think there is the option to do that. I know that the applicant is very eager to get to counsel and would appreciate between, I mean, of course, the applicant would prefer a recommendation for approval, but if the commission feels that it's not in a position to make that recommendation at this time, the applicant would prefer that recommendation for denial so that this can move forward to counsel. It has already been noticed for counsel, and we're set to go there May 2.
And then the last question I would have is, if we voted for approval, could we add suggestions or revisions to that?
I think you absolutely can. I would prefer personally that those come by way of during discussion, you state your concerns or you state items that you would like counsel to consider. As you probably saw, there are a number of conditions that staff is recommending, and we're actually hoping to simplify that list before we get to counsel. But I know counsel really appreciates the work of this commission, will listen to this meeting, and will hear all of the comments that you make.
So just tagging on to that a little bit, so would that be an approval with recommendations?
So I think what the commission would make is a recommendation for approval. If whoever made the motion would like to say, we're making a recommend, you know, this is a motion for a recommendation for approval. However, we ask that when this is brought to counsel, counsel consider in particular, and then whatever the item is. I think that's probably an easier way. Another way is just simply to add another condition, but I think, I mean, we're going to simplify the conditions anyway, and counsel is going to hear this. So I think either way is fine, but probably it's going to be easier if we don't do a formal condition.
Feel like that answers everybody's questions as far as going forward. Okay, do we have anything that staff has to tell us before we go to the next item?
No.
Okay.
Prepared the memo, trying to address as many, ended up with a lot less time trying to prepare answers. So there was the memo. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer them.
Yeah, when I, when I looked, I saw, Mary, I saw your email saying that we couldn't access those two, there were two memos that were listed and that we couldn't access them. And then we got an email later from Alex saying that she thought the link was fixed, or somebody said it was fixed. But I didn't see the two memos listed anymore. And then Becky, you said there was a memo from staff, but it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what that memo was.
Do you want me to just highlight the memo?
That would be great.
So in terms of the memo, it's just the information, just responding to the information requested by the commission at the 4/12/23 meeting. First is a draft copy of the development agreement to be presented to counsel on May 16th is attached for the commission's review. This draft was only recently completed for noticing for the council review on, for the, for the council review coming in May. A draft of the easement for the open space areas within the proposed NAH health village was also attached, as requested previously. A list of the required Phase 1 transportation improvement analysis mitigation requirements was attached. And the draft development agreement does include that same required mitigation. So one of the conditions of approval of the specific plan is that the specific plan needs to be updated. So as Christina just mentioned, there are a number of conditions we'd like to get resolved between now and counsel, depending upon the outcome of today's meeting. So there's a number of conditions. Those conditions were also reiterated in this memo, but you have those conditions in the previous reports as well. So there are a number of things that need to be edited within the specific plan itself. So our goal is to get that work completed here shortly. Lastly, so the development agreement includes the following regarding the outdoor fitness equipment. The parties acknowledge that programming for land use area 1B has not occurred beyond conceptual descriptions and depictions. So I think the question was asked, what was the exact equipment that would be installed? And we've agreed that we have not yet picked out that equipment. But that NAH shall consult with the city's PROS division in developing those plans for that recreation area, and meeting the goals and policies set forth in the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So that's the language in the development agreement to date. Because all of the site planning work for that area hasn't been completed yet, there are a lot of final details we won't have. The draft development agreement details the required infrastructure improvements to be provided by NAH. These infrastructure improvements focus on water, sewer, stormwater, and transportation infrastructure, both on and off the associated site. Cost estimates for all of these improvements have not yet been developed. The reason being is because we haven't seen civil plans for all of the cost estimates. I have rough approximate cost estimates for what the off-site transportation improvements are. It ranges anywhere between $35 and $45 million. The reason why I have those numbers is that that particular budget was prepared for a grant application. But again, full civil plans have not yet been reviewed, but that's the rough estimate between $35 and $45 million for those improvements. If the grant is not obtained, NAH is responsible for making sure that those road improvements are completed. Lastly, there's also a 16-inch water main that will be, needs to be constructed, and it goes through the NAH site, connects to a water main just outside of Fort Tuthill, goes through the NAH development site, and will connect through Beulah all the way down to University Heights Drive South. Alone, that water main would probably be in the range of about a $3 million project, but it would be done in conjunction with that road project. So that water line is within that $35 to $45 million estimate, right? So it'll be completed in conjunction with that road improvement project. So there are some efficiencies gained there, so it doesn't really have a standalone cost. There is a water storage tank that needs to be developed. The cost for that is anywhere between $1.5, $1.7 million in the development agreement. If you had a chance to peruse that, we are also, the city, we oftentimes will partner with a developer when infrastructure is being put in. So maybe a developer needs a 16-inch water main, and maybe we want a 20-inch or an 18-inch. We will, we will pay that additional cost, knowing that it's a really big efficiency for the city. Same's kind of true with the water tank. We're working in conjunction with NAH on that location. The city is already in need of additional water storage, so we're already working on acquiring the property for that water storage tank. We have built-in provisions, however, if we're not able to, to come up with that site or we're unsuccessful, NAH is still responsible for their portion. But we may also work with them on adding additional water storage. And again, all of those are detailed in the development agreement. The last item, in terms of budget and financing, is not really considered an infrastructure improvement, and that is the capital cost of the fire station. So a lot of work was done, and a lot of information has been provided in the previous reports in regards to the analysis that has been completed in regards to the fire station. It has been determined that a fully-staffed ladder company is necessary at Fire Station 6. We know that Fire Station 6 is not large enough to accommodate that additional piece of equipment. In this particular situation, NAH has agreed to cover 50% of the capital cost for relocating that fire station. So the city will take on the other 50% cost. As was discussed at the previous meeting, the city is comfortable with covering and has already identified funds for those one-time capital costs that were attributed to fire-related service. There is an additional $1.4 million for ongoing personnel costs. What we heard from our Management Services Director was that there is a grant that the city is looking at pursuing that would cover those costs for a three-year timeframe. After that, the city would be responsible for those ongoing personnel costs, which a budget has not yet been set, so we do not know the exact, we do not know exactly where that funding source comes from for that 1.4. It's not allocated. So it's really easy within a budget process to allocate one-time capital. It's a much different discussion, and it's, it's really hard to sit here and tell you today, this is how this personnel cost is going to be covered, because it could be covered the first three years by a grant, it could be covered the next six years by some other funding source, and then it could go into something else. I think the important thing to recognize by, with fire service, which is different from road infrastructure, is is that fire service doesn't only just serve NAH. It will serve the broader community, and the overall community and other areas of growth within the city will benefit from the expansion of Fire Station 6. Currently, we do assess development impact fees for fire services. Those include capital costs for fire stations. Our development impact fees took into account the potential of two new fire stations in the future. And so there are development impact fees that can go towards the development of, and the city's contribution of that 50%, as well as NAH's contribution potentially. That capital cost, or those development impact fees also cover the cost of equipment and materials. They just can't cover staffing. So again, staffing is really that unknown question. Our Management Services Director gave a laundry list of different ways. There's lots of tools in the toolbox that can be used for personnel and staffing, but it is something that adjusts and changes sort of year to year as the budget is completed. And that is the bulk of what is in this memo, and then I just pulled out all of the conditions. Sorry.
Is there any way to get a copy of the memo right now?
I can email it to you right now if that works for you. I'll go print it out.
Can you print it out?
Sure.
I have a copy here. I don't know if you want me to pass it around or if you can make copies.
How many copies would you like?
I'd like a copy.
I'm making it right now.
Do you care about your notebook?
I'm sending it to the copier right now. Oh, nope. Never mind, can't print. Sorry. For some reason, I'm not connected to that internet. Any other questions at this point?
If I can just interrupt for just one second, just so everybody knows, and apologies for the blinking screens that we have. Just so you know, the audio, the streaming, everything's working normally except for the TVs in this room, and good thing we just don't have presentations today, so we're not going to worry about it. But sorry about the, the flashing screens there.
Just, I know I have these in front of me, and I'm reading them, and I keep rereading them. Can you tell us the differences between the two motions?
Applications?
The two items. So PG 21-00126-01 and -02.
Sure. So PG 21-0012601 is the specific plan request. That specific plan will serve as the guiding document for development within the NAH health village and that particular activity center. It is a twofold document. It is both a regulatory document as well as a policy document. So it furthers the goals and policies of the regional plan as well. PG 21-00126-02 is a concept zoning map amendment that for the rezoning of 98.39 acres located at 1120 West Purple Sage. Of that total 98.39 acres, 63.1 acres would be rezoned to highway commercial, and 35.21 acres would be rezoned to public facilities. And that public facilities is really for that open space, because it includes an active recreation component.
Can I, I'd like to say something about my understanding of this, and maybe this would be helpful, Carol. So this application for rezoning was made with the option to do a specific plan, right? Or a concept plan? So the, the specific plan is actually, while we're, while we're going to be making a motion on rezoning a portion of this site, we're, we're going to be making a motion for the specific plan which addresses the whole site. So they're kind of, you know, they're connected that way.
Let me be a little bit more specific. The regulatory component of this specific plan only applies to the area currently being rezoned. The goals and policies of this specific plan apply to the remainder of the area, and this specific plan will be used as part of your regional plan analysis for the rezoning of Phase 2. But it does not create, does not contain regulatory requirements for Phase 2.
So in other words, if there are future rezonings for other portions of this property, that we won't be reviewing as a specific plan again? That's done, that will have been done one way or the other?
Nope. We will be reviewing a Phase 2 specific plan that will also include regulatory components for Phase 2 as well. So when you see this, when you see Phase 2 move forward, it will be both the specific plan as well as the rezoning as well.
Okay.
This, this leads into one of the questions I did have. So there will be a second specific plan or sort of a, just a Phase 2 of the specific plan?
Yes.
And so there'll, obviously, there's going to be more rezonings for those parcels within Phase 2 of the development, as well as Phase 2 of the specific plan, which is the same, I suppose. Would there be a second development agreement, or will there end up being amendments to this development agreement that covers things in Phase 2?
Yes.
How long does this specific plan remain in effect?
Forever, unless it's amended or rescinded. And generally, when we adopt a new regional plan, which is the overarching document, it'll specifically acknowledge these specific plans. Our specific plans were done that same way in the last document. So until it's amended or updated, it will remain in place.
I'm going to ask him the different question while everybody else is reading the memo. In the zoning code amendment, the original documents from our March 22 meeting, in the staff report, it outlined 12 conditions. But today's agenda and the staff report for this item says that there's 11 conditions. And so when I went back to look at the minutes from our March 22, it showed the 11. Number nine in the original documents was dropped off, which read, "To mitigate the proposed building, building development, a 60-foot front landscape buffer from Beulah Boulevard shall be provided with the intent of preserving as many mature ponderosa trees as possible." Was that?
Yes.
Dropped off on purpose?
No.
Should be back in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Again, this was hastily done.
It just kind of got lost along the way.
Yep. Bag, cut, and paste.
So I don't know if that requires a, a change, an amendment to our approval of the minutes from that meeting, or is there any procedural things that we need to fix about that?
It's correct in the, in the original staff summary, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. If you use the original staff summary for your recommendation tonight, whatever, whichever way you go, then, then that should be fine. I just, I threw these in here just as a convenience.
Okay, so even though we approved minutes last week where it was left out?
It wa, it shouldn't have been left out last week, so this is just a brand-new report that I finished on Thursday. So I copied and pasted from March 22. There wasn't.
So, yeah, so in the minutes that we approved last week from March 22, that's where it was dropped off.
Oh, it was dropped off the minutes?
Yes.
Or off the staff summary?
Off the minutes.
Okay. I didn't realize the conditions were added to the minutes.
So it was the minutes from the March 22 meeting that we approved last week?
It might be best to have, Becky can go ahead and verify what was in the minutes, and we'll go ahead and continue with this item. And when this item is concluded, we can go back to the previous approval of the minutes and do a modification if we need to.
Okay, are there any other, if there aren't any other, we'll have time for more questions later, so if anything comes up, you know, you can just ask. But let's move on then and ask if there are any new public comments for this hearing. Any, any cards? No public comments? Okay. Nothing on that? Okay, thank you. Well, then, this is our time to...
I'm sorry, Marie, can I, I will interrupt.
Yeah.
Just so you know, there were, it looks like, five more emails that were sent in that have not made it to you all. So I'm not sure how you want to handle those, but I want you to know that they're there.
Was it okay if we take a minute, and if they're not real long?
I mean, I can, I can read them, or Tiffany can read them.
That would be great.
If you want.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to.
It says, "Dear P&amp;Z Commissioners, I am writing in regard to the Arizona healthcare requests for the rezoning of land near Fort Tuthill. My request is that you delay any approvals until city staff show how the proposed new hospital project will impact the Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan, carbon neutrality by 2030. The carbon neutrality plan has now been incorporated into the Flagstaff Regional Plan, the city's primary planning document, and P&amp;Z must find that a project is consistent with the regional plan in order to approve it. The city should adhere to the Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan and take the time to fully vet the proposal under consideration. Janine Trupiano? Probably hacked that, sorry. "The next one, in light of the exponentially increasing severity of the climate crisis, the fact that you are even considering the NAH proposal is incomprehensible. NAH appears to have no plan for reducing carbon. How can that be in light of their 2022 climate pledge? In it, they stated, 'The sustainability initiative brings together the healthcare industry in a commitment to reduce carbon emissions and make healthcare facilities more resilient to the effects of climate change. NAH does not seem to be backing up their climate pledge in any way, except for a vague mention of possible future actions. This is totally unacceptable. Climate mitigation must happen now. Even 2030, the city's goal for carbon neutrality may be too late. We must do all we can to slow global warming. Constructing this behemoth with no carbon-reducing, energy-saving, overall promises is adding to our human-caused disaster. As the Flagstaff Planning and Zoning Commissioners, you cannot in good conscience vote for this climate-destructive project to go forward. Please do not, please do what is right for citizens of our commu, sorry, of our city, our country, and our world. Sincerely, Jill Stevenson.'" This one says that they're submitting a letter on behalf of Doug Maple. This is a little longer, so bear with me. "Northern Arizona healthcare is losing an average of almost $5 million per month and has done so for several months. Until last year, NAH has been a profitable, not-for-profit for decades. What happened? Several things: personnel costs have dramatically increased since the beginning of COVID in early 2020. More than half of the nurses, respiratory therapists, and other licensed hospital staff have left. Travelers and other temporary staff have come to replace them at a very high price. Many doctors in all specialties have also left, creating a dependence on very expensive locum tenens replacements. At the same time, revenue has decreased. Specialty services, service lines such as sleep medicine, neurology have been diminished or lost altogether. Transfer of patients from other hospitals into NAH has decreased. The new economic factor that is most problematic is the high cost of living in Flagstaff. The median cost for a home in Flagstaff is now over $600,000, and the average price per square foot is more than $300,000. Healthcare careers such as nursing or pharmacy will provide for a comfortable living in most parts of the country. However, in Flagstaff, housing costs have put single-family homes out of reach for the average nurse, especially if they are carrying educational debt." NH, oh my goodness. "NAH has been promoting a new health and wellness village anchored by a completely new hospital on an enormous property south of town, a plan that will obligate the city of Flagstaff to over, to invest over $50 million to create new roads or other infrastructure. However, if NAH cannot adapt to the new economic reality now, it will quite predictably lose money from the very first day the new hospital..." it will quite predictably lose money from the very first day the new hospital opens its doors. The Flagstaff Planning and Zoning Commission has been studying the proposed new multi-purpose proposal with the duty of determining whether it is right development to serve the specific need at the right time. It must also consider the fate of the existing hospital, which at this time is only a vague promise to have consulting firm come to discuss options with the community, but only after the city has committed to the new project. NIH claims that the new facility will secure the future of Flagstaff's healthcare system for the next 50 years. At this time, it is not clear whether NIH has an economic model that can survive the next five years. In my opinion, this proposed development is based on too many assumptions about healthcare that are no longer valid. Asking taxpayers to invest tens of millions of dollars in a company that is losing money at a breathtaking clip is completely unreasonable. The Yavapai County Commissioners were asked by NIH to support $450 million in bonds for the new facility, and after much deliberation, they refused. The Flagstaff Planning and Zoning Commission should follow their lead. It is time to reassess the healthcare needs of Northern Arizona and design a system that addresses the needs of all of its communities in light of the new economic reality." And that's Douglas Maple, MD. "A new economic reality for healthcare in Flagstaff, Northern Arizona Healthcare is losing an average of..." This is the identical thing, so I'm not going to read it again. It seems like it came from somebody else, but it's the identical letter that I just read. Um, sorry, I should have told you that.
Who did it come from the second time?
Yeah, Lisa Bowles, it appears. Oh, and sorry, I should have read the first sentence. It says, "This was posted on Nextdoor by Douglas Maple, and I concur." Sorry, I didn't see. It was a different, it was a different part of the email, so I didn't see it, so I apologize. "Good afternoon, community members. Thank you for the ability to submit my public comment in this manner. My anxiety level would never permit me to speak in public or even online, via an online method. I can relate to this guy. I am vehemently opposed to the project and believe the listed fact statements below support why the project is completely inappropriate for this site. The tower would, the tower would stand two times the height of this tallest surrounding trees. The unsightly monolith would absolutely be visible from my neighborhood, Mountain Dell and University Heights. The structure would be visible from I-17 to the point that it would obstruct the view of our town's beautiful peaks for every resident returning home and all of our visitors coming from Phoenix." Number two, NIH submitted a limited traffic impact assessment report, which selectively omitted the impact their project would make on the Fort Tuthill Park and access to activities across the airport interchange. This dishonesty and purposeful action intended to, I think he means obstruct, their negative impacts to the area and the city in general are heinous. To add to the traffic impact issue, a project of this size will disrupt traffic for an undetermined length of time. Their plan is to occur over 20 years. Our small neighborhood is the closest to this project and will be the most disruptive by the continued construction and detours. In our community, we have city employees, healthcare workers, railroad employees that have required response time when called to work. My neighbor that works for BNSF has to drive from his house in Flag to Winslow and will be fired if he is unable to make this timeframe. Even a five-minute wait at a detour or one-way traffic section will cause detrimental effects." Number four, in previous meetings, this proposal, statements were made that there would be, not be environmental impacts to the area because of this project. This is false. The current drainage from this location directly flows down to an actual floodplain. And this floodplain is our neighborhood's primary access to our community, our monthly family mailbox, and a section of footpath. When we experience heavy monsoons and significant snowfall, this area becomes impassable. This winter alone, we have seen frequent interruptions to our One City Service we actually receive, which is trash, trash collection because of standing water and snow. The amount of parking lots and non-water penetrating materials used in this project will exponentially increase the water draining down the steep hill to this floodplain. We will experience limited or complete interruptions in ingress and egress to our homes. The structure is not being built in carbon-neutral method or materials. The loss of large stand of trees is also detrimental. Please consider that not-for-profit hospitals should not be making money from retail shops, grocery stores, hotels, or from developers who build housing projects. Their sole focus should be patients and their healthcare. Does the hospital actually directly pay monies to the city? They don't pay property taxes like other businesses do. I don't think there are sales taxes on their services, so how does NIH truly add to the city's revenue stream directly rather than just indirectly? A rebuild at the current site would bring the same number of temporary jobs through construction, and any additional jobs within the facility would only happen if the current administration is suddenly more successful at securing all the lost employees, i.e. nurses, doctors, EBS workers, surgical techs to the NIH system. Allowing NIH to continue without a condition use permit in place will give NIH the ability to move forward unchecked and give no voice to the neighboring communities. NIH already has the ability to increase the bed count and available services. Currently, at VVMC, they have an entire floor in a shell state that could be built out immediately for additional patient beds. NIH can remodel their current site in a vertical streamlined method that would give all patient rooms access to the key services of the ICU, ED, surgery, radiology, laboratory, cath lab, and IR. An additional tower over the current ICU and ED would solve this problem. Restoring the second and fourth floors of the west campus to observation beds, i.e. for patients who have intended stay of less than 23 hours after a surgery or procedure, and med-surg beds would also increase FMC total bed count significantly. NIH is not being honest with the community, with this committee on so many levels. They will not be, they will not even be worth coming about their plans for the current facility, I think is what he's meant. There is no actual need for a new site either. The current approximately, last two years of patient census does not support the need for this enormous project. Due to NIH's senior-level management practices, we have lost our only neurosurgeon. Yes, there is not a full-time independent or employed neurosurgeon for the entire Northern Arizona working in either hospital. At the best, they may be able to get a temporary locum tenen doctor to inconsistently work shifts. Because of this, FMC can no longer call themselves a Level 1 Trauma Center. Just another reason this gigantic project does not need to be approved. If, if I understanding the information presented in the last meeting, NIH is still not willing to contribute to the mountain line bus system, and the money is needed for the ladder truck, new station, and staff, NIH asked for a credit of like $500,000. Does this mean they would never give actual monies to the city to support improvements that are solely created by them? Again, thank you for your time and attention in this matter. Please deny their application for this project and accompany zoning changes in support of better Flagstaff." And that was from Rick Burke. And that's the rest of them you received.
Thanks, Becky. Okay, so I think where we are is ready to talk about this and ask any questions that come up. But, you know, I, I know I have a lot of thoughts I'd like to share, but I'm really interested to hear what everybody else has. So if anyone wants to dive in, okay, great. Thank you.
So I guess the first one that we're talking about is the specific plan, since we have to approve these separately, right?
You know, I, I think that the way we've been talking about it so far is kind of together. I mean, they are two separate motions. But as far as, you know, how we talk about the whole project, I don't, I don't think we have to sequester them. That's my opinion, but...
Okay.
However you, however you think, too. It's fine.
I was just trying to put my thoughts into some sort of order as I went through everything. I had a question about the specific plan with regard to Section L on sustainability about the third-party certification. So that was on page 78 of the specific plan. And it, you know, states that it's recommended that all future buildings review third-party certifications for building performance as a way to validate and approve sustainable design and operations. And each building should consider at least one of the following third-party certifications within five years of occupancy. And that's where all the, the different methods and certifications were listed, like LEED and International Living Futures Institute. That's where the Energy Star 75 came in and all the other options, which, you know, have varying levels of sustainability, energy efficiency, and indoor healthy living. So I wouldn't have been in favor of the word "recommended" and "should", but I also see that in the draft DA, under the supplemental to the specific plan, under sustainability, it requires, and this is where it was talked about last week. It was talked about that the building for NIH would be required to have an Energy Star 75 rating. So does this new supplement in the DA about Energy Star 75 now override and replace that section?
It doesn't necessarily need to. The DA furthers what was in the specific plan. I don't see that they conflict.
Okay, so Energy Star 75 is going to be the minimum requirement. Obviously, any developer can get any of the other certifications. They probably wouldn't if they were going to get, be required to get Energy Star 75. And then, so having said that, so this would be subject to the Phase 1 specific plan in this rezoning only? Or is that also going to carry through to all of the developments? Or was this something we'll have to readdress again when we get to Phase 2 of the specific plan?
It would be something we would readdress with Phase 2.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'm, I'd like to, are you ready? Okay, I, I know mine's going to take a minute. Okay. So I just want to share, you know, my thinking about this. And it's really shifted a lot as we've gone through this process, probably has with you all. First of all, just considering the whole idea of a need for a hospital, a need for a new hospital, because this has been the subject of a number of comments and also part of the presentation of the applicant. I, when it comes to, first of all, I mean, I, during the last year, I'd been involved with a hospital, with hospital care, intensive hospital care, and I've had, I had the benefit of incredible integrated healthcare. And it was, it was a really very positive experience for me. It's the kind of thing I think everybody should have, everybody should have. I feel that more than anything. And I realize that people don't have that kind of healthcare. I realize that there are problems with, you know, the current hospital we have, and that it's out of date, and I don't question that assessment. We, of course, you know, the commission isn't part of that assessment. We don't have access to any of that kind of information about how that assessment was made. We also don't have information about any other sites that were considered for this. So, but I guess the first thing in my mind is that I need to make some kind of a separation between the idea of the hospital and the need for a hospital, and this project looking at it from the Planning and Zoning Commission perspective. If, so this is, when the applicant did choose property, they decided, they came up with the idea of this health village concept. So this is, you know, it is a hospital, it is ambulatory care. It is also offices, it is also conference center, it's also possibly two hotels. It's also residential. It's a number of different things. So from a zoning point of view, from a commission point of view, I have to look at this as a mixed-use project that has a hospital as an anchor. Now, if I were looking at a project that was a mixed-use project, and it had, say, the biggest Walmart in the world as an anchor, or, I don't know, you know, an Olympic Training Center as an anchor, then I would be looking at it as a mixed-use project, and I would be evaluating on that. Should I be looking at it differently because it, the anchor is a hospital, which I agree we need? Or should I, you know, should I be looking at the findings, you know, based on the fact that it is a mixed-use project? That it has a number of things. And, you know, some of those elements of this project are profit centers. And that's a choice that the applicant made when they picked this side and designed it this way. I would say, so, so, so when I am thinking about this, I'm trying to separate to some degree the notion that this is a hospital, because it's a lot more than a hospital. Two of the, so I kind of want to go through some of these findings and what stood out to me. Let's see. So for the, for the, kind of talking about the rezoning here, we have to look at the, whether the, the application is in conformance with the goals and policies of the regional plan and any other plans, such as the carbon, the climate action plan.
Actually, I just want, the climate action plan is not...
Not the climate action plan, but the, yeah.
But the policies that have been incorporated.
Policies, right, that have been incorporated. So, so let's see. What do I, this is very complex. Okay, so there are a couple of things. There's some things that I really admire about this plan and appreciate about this, about this application. When I look at the way, just as a plan, as, as, as a, as a concept zoning, as a, as a map for how this parcel would be developed, I appreciate the amount of open space, the idea of a, of integrating this kind of open space and natural area with the development and with the community. The, the actual, the actual building as a concept. I realize it's just kind of a concept drawing at this stage, but I think it looks very attractive. I personally can understand and don't have a problem with the height of this building because I feel like it is, but, but you don't really see it except from certain vantage points. And the rationale for having a tall building, I think, makes a lot of sense for, that is, in fact, my experience too, of how an integrated healthcare system really functions well in terms of the space. So that in itself is not an issue for me. What does stand out to me as a problem is, are the, the issues having to do with sustainability? And it's not even so much, let's see if I can talk about this in an intelligent way. The idea of, of carbon neutrality for, for a healthcare system. I, I did a fair amount of reading to try to understand more how this is being done in the world and in this country. And it's, to me, it seems fairly complex about how you achieve carbon neutrality. One organization I read about was Kaiser Permanente, a big healthcare system. How they achieve, they have achieved carbon neutrality. They can document this. How they achieve it is in a number of ways. Part of it is the building. And part of it is the, you know, how they might recycle and reuse things. Do they use Sharps containers a number of different times? You know, when do they, at what point do they throw things away? What is their supply chain like? How do they acquire things? It's, it's operational things that are happening. When I think about that whole process, for one thing, I don't feel at all like I'm qualified to evaluate how that's working. What, what it is, what I would be asking for specifically. I do, I see that in terms of the zoning regulations... What it is, what I would be asking for specifically, I do, I see that in terms of the zoning regulations that the city of Flagstaff has, the applicant is meeting those. You could make, I hear comments, a number of comments that, I guess I would, excuse me if I don't characterize this exactly right, but I would tend to say it has to do with the idea that there's some sense in which the applicant should be showing a greater commitment to carbon neutrality and a greater commitment to sustainability than it is showing, that it should, is there something more it should be doing? And, excuse me, my mouth is dry. And I, again, I'm not sure what it is I would be asking for. What stands out to me more than those kinds of things, like, you know, the specific sustainability measures, is, is kind of the foundational idea that, that the land that the applicant has brought forward for this application is on the edge of town. It has, it's taking a facility that is right now centrally located, it's, it's in the middle of town, it's very accessible, and it has infrastructure serving it broadly, and it's moving to a place on the edge of town which has much less infrastructure serving it. And even more sort of globally on this, to me, it is, it is a kind of a sprawling sort of approach to development. And if I go back to the idea that, what if this were a mixed-use development that was putting a big Walmart in there? I would, I don't think, you know, it would be, it would be a sprawling on the edge of town. It would not be really embracing this idea that, this sort of philosophical idea that's behind, I think, so many of the goals and policies in the general plan that are about we should be densifying in our center, we should not be sprawling out to our edges. So that is a place where I feel like this application, I have a hard time making the finding on that thing. Now, that's just one item among a lot of items having to do with sustainability, but it's, to me, a really important one. And as I could say, I mean, there've been a lot of comments about how important sustainability is for all of us and to us in Flagstaff, and I guess I tend to agree with that. I think, you know, at what point do we decide, you know, certain policies and goals we have are going to rise to be more important than others? So that's, that's what's on my mind with this. And this also ties into a second issue, which I have a hard time understanding why this is so intractable. But to not have public transportation serve a hospital is very important to me. It's not just will there be a way to get there? It's just the whole idea of, I've lived in places with public transportation, I've relied on public transportation, there's autonomy associated with public transportation. You can go and you can get on a bus when you want to get on a bus, you don't have to call somebody, you don't have to, you know, figure out, oh, how do I get from here to there? It's just, it's there, it's public information, you can do it. It just seems of critical importance. Now, I, I've heard that, heard the suggestion that probably there will be some kind of a, well, there will be a shuttle. I understand the shuttle, but that is still private transportation, that is not public transportation, but that there may be a bond to raise money to improve bus service. And probably Flagstaff being Flagstaff, there's a really good reason to think that that will pass, but what if it doesn't pass? Where are we with that? Are we a town, a city that has a hospital that is not served by public transportation? This really, you know, it's, it's like one small issue, but it really hangs me up. And I, I have a hard time knowing what to do with that, that piece of information. Some of the, the healthcare, the applicant gave us examples of healthcare villages in other places. There was one in Minnesota, one in Michigan, and one in Nevada. As far as I can tell, I don't know about Henderson, Nevada, how, how well that's served by infrastructure, but the other two for sure are in the middle of developed areas, developed cities. The infrastructure issues are not as relevant. And other things I've read about healthcare villages is just, is the idea that they should be accessible. So I think that that is a unique problem to this application, that it doesn't, it doesn't solve that. Let's see what else I had here. Sorry, this is taking a long time, but the whole thing's taken a long time and just a lot on my mind, and I'm really interested to hear what everybody else thinks. I just want to make sure I, that's probably good enough for me for now. So, so I'll, I'll stop there and let other people have a, hopefully that we can really have a discussion on that. I honestly have to say that I've come into this meeting undecided. It, I do, I think, I think, but those are, I wanted to just express the things that I'm, I'm getting hung up on. So anybody else would like to, Carol?
So this is Commissioner Mandino, and I agree with most of your points. However, I find that a seven-story hospital doesn't serve the need of the community, and that's not just from a view-shut issue, that's from the issue of all the infrastructure that has to be put in place with the city. And I know we've identified some things that will help with that, but that still means we still have to spend a whole lot of money on the city's behalf to serve a seven-story tower, which I think could be lowered or redesigned, the hospital could be redesigned to fit more within the standards of Flagstaff. Part of that is that I, I looked down the road at Phase Two or Phase Three and, you know, with the plan to build hotels on that property, and, you know, it could be five, six, seven years from now, those hotels come in and they ask, they want to build seven stories, they want to build 160 feet, because it's already out there, and that's really concerning to me. I think that in the last few years, we've gone about lowering how high buildings can be in the regional plan, and I, I think this just goes against that. I also agree with you from the point of transportation, that I think that there's going to be a dependency of auto travel for the majority of Flagstaff residents, and that does not fit in with the net zero emissions plan by 2030. I am very concerned about how the underserved members of our population will be able to get to the hospital if they need services. I think it's the sprawl that you've mentioned is a concern of mine. You know, moving this out to the edge of town, very edge of town, is a problem to me, and I'm not certain why we need a village. I agree, we need a new hospital. I don't think this is the perfect location for a hospital. I'm not sure why the hospital wants to be in the housing business and the hotel business and the retail business. I think that the hotel, or the hospital should be building a hospital in ACC. Maybe, you know, you might put in the wellness trail, but man, Flagstaff is the wellness trail, right? We have wellness trails all around. So I don't really necessarily buy into that concept. I, yeah, so, looking at my, the rest of my notes. You know, for me, I feel that I'd like to see a scaled-down project that better meets the design and fits the needs of the community. And I think I stated this last time, while I understand residents of the Verde Valley love the location, I'm here to sell, as a commissioner for the city of Flagstaff and not for the region. And while I understand the hospital serves a larger community, they're building within our city, and so I think that has to be taken in consideration that, you know, it needs to be and meet our building needs. One of the other things that I think will happen is that if this hospital is relocated on the edge of town, I think the doctors in time will be vacating their offices and their locations that are in the community to also be relocated on the edge of town. And that doesn't serve anybody's interests for the city. That's, that's going to be, you know, you talk about urban sprawl, and we're going to have a lot of vacancies within the city, and I don't see that serves the city well.
Any other thoughts here from commissioners?
I have a lot of thoughts, and I think they're on the opposite side of the spectrum of what you two have pointed out, so I'll, I'll just share them. And the first one, I'll state, and most of the objections we got in our emails had to do with carbon neutrality. And I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see that the city has any requirement for this project on its own to be carbon neutral. I think, if I understand it right, that's a goal of the city collectively to be carbon neutral, but not independently for each project. And I, I've only been on this P&amp;Z commission for a few months, but not a single project has been brought forward where we've said, this project must be carbon neutral for us to prove it. That's not even come up yet. So I don't know that that is a requirement that we should put on this one. Should it adhere to, you know, trying to be better? Yes. Should it be good stewards? Yes. Carbon neutral, I think that's asking too much. I want to go back to what you said, we have to look at this as a mixed-use space. Yes, there's a hospital, there's a lot of emotions to this. We had a lot of people come in and tell us, either NIH is the savior of the world or they're evil. We've heard both sides, but in the end, it's a mixed-use space, and we have to divorce ourselves of the emotions behind this and look at it as, is this specific plan a good mixed-use specific plan? And in my reading of it, and I've helped prepare specific plans as my, I'm a civil engineer and I've helped several of these before, this is well-written, it was done, there's a good group behind it. I felt like it had, it met the requirements of what a specific plan should have, and I didn't walk away with a whole lot of questions. And I think one thing that gets lost in what a specific plan is, yeah, it has the word "specific," but it's a plan. We're not supposed to know all the details of what the inside rooms are going to look like, things like that. It's more of a plan to move forward with. So I guess I would ask the question, for example, is it our role to deny a mixed-use plan such as this because transportation issues are a problem? Or is it our role to deny this because underserved people can't get to a hospital? Those are important questions, but in the end, if it's a mixed-use space, that's what we're looking at. So I'll stop right there and let somebody else speak a little bit.
I don't have as much of an issue with it being on the edge of town because of the freeway access and because of the type of the development that it is, and because it is a regional development, and I think it's a good location for the hospital. Having a village and having a master plan, which is what the specific plan is, gives everybody a little bit of control on what gets built around it, instead of just having some random rezoning or by right development that comes our way later on. It gives us some, I'm a fan of master plans from my experience. And the thing is, is that the city just, it can't be all things to all people. And so if we put the hospital out there and there's development there, yes, it's, it's creates, in a sense, some sprawl, but perhaps the legacy campus, if it is utilized for housing, which is what it could be, is already zoned for, I think it's a zone for high density, that kind of solves that infill issue that the city has the goal of creating, which is infill and housing in the center of town. So I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. What my wish list is, is that, you know, as far as the sustainability, and I've gone through that, I've combed through that portions of the specific plan and did some research, found the information about Kaiser Permanente and their hospital in Northern California, that they're carbon neutral and all of these sorts of things. And I think the goals that are within this specific plan and the Energy Star 75 are adequate, but they're adequate. I wish NIH was taking a really strong leadership role in really creating something that was above just the minimum requirements. I wish they were becoming a leader in this area of creating a hospital wellness campus that was a higher level of, of a commitment to, to those goals. And part of that would be buying into some offsets. The offsets, I think, that would be appropriate for this is the solar panels. I wish, I know they're looking into it, and I know they're expensive. I wish there was a timeframe, like, there will be solar panels in, by year three or year five. That would be my, one of my wish lists. I wish that there was some housing that was going to be dedicated to hospital employees. I wish that there was mountain line financial assistance. But the biggest problem that I have with this is that even though this is a huge regional benefit, the city carries the entire burden, the entire financial shouldering of these expenses. We're the, we're the only ones supporting this. So from Tuba City to the Verde Valley, of course, everybody wants a great new hospital. We do too within the city, but it is the city and the city's taxpayers that are going to have to figure out how to pay for this. I am concerned about the RACE grant. A lot, both of these are predicated on Beulah being expanded, and it's $45 million. And yes, they've applied, everybody's applied for the RACE grant, and that gets awarded, I did some research on that too, that gets awarded on, by June 28th. I wish all these sorts of decisions were going to be tabled until we knew if that funding was coming through, because that could be a deal breaker, I would imagine. $45 million for NIH to be responsible for, to expand Beulah, that's a lot. It concerns me about where our funding is coming from within the city, those sources that have been identified, what that means. I did watch the city council meeting last night where, you know, they're coming up on a, doing the budget, they're coming up on a decision of looking into the feasibility of a property tax increase, and what that would, what that would mean now, what it's going to mean in the future, and how we pay for this unidentified $1.4 million just for the fire operating and maintenance from year to year. So it's the financial commitment from the city that concerns me the most. Now, is that... Now, is that our job on this commission to dictate? No. You know, we're looking at approving a concept zoning change and a specific plan, but it is sort of still a full package deal. And so that's where I, I get stuck on. And sometimes I think, you know, when we simplify it, it might be easier, it's easier to approve, but there's always ramifications that rear their head. And this came to mind when we had the public hearing in November about changing the designation of the activity center. And it seemed pretty, a pretty easy decision. But it wasn't until the next public hearing in March that we heard from the fire department that, well, because you changed it to a higher intensity, the fire department and public services never intended or never had the budgeting to support that change. So those, that's where I start to get very cautious about all of this. And anyway, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
You have to hold this button down the whole time, so. I appreciate everyone's comments, and, and I also just want to say that I appreciate all of the presentations and the citizens' comments. I am also very new to this, so welcome to the fire. But I just wanted to say that, that what I can't get past is that the hospital basically wants to move to change their business model from just a hospital to an actual hospital with profit centers. So, you know, such as hotels and shops. And I understand you're going to bring in developers, but, you know, again, that's going to help the hospital and your business model and how you're going to make money in the future. But what I can't get past is why the taxpayers have to pick up, at least what we know of, 10 million for the fire station, the fire truck, and the fire battalion. And that's just the first year of the fire battalion. I know that we've discussed other, you know, ways that we can raise this money. But what I keep getting stuck on is that we haven't even really taken into account the infrastructure. You're right, we put in for a grant, we won't know till June. But we want to go ahead and vote on this zoning, even though we have costs that we don't know if they're going to be covered by the to be determined impact fees, right? And so this rezoning moves the project forward without a definitive answer of the total cost to Flagstaff citizens.
Do you, are you ready? Do you want to talk? Okay.
Yes, I agree with most of the statements that have already been made, and I won't rehash all of those. I think the only other thing that wasn't really brought up that concerns me is the fact that NIH had bought up all of this property that was zoned rural and a state residential with intentions of, of rezoning and all this. But I don't feel that it's fair to all the adjacent property owners that moved there and want to live there in their rural and estate residential properties and have that seclusion to now be neighbors to a large commercial, commercial campus. So that was kind of my last thought.
Thanks. I, I wanted to make a couple more comments here based on what I've heard too. I wanted to also say something about the, changing the activity center from a neighborhood to a regional activity center. I honestly don't think I fully appreciated that when I voted on it. The implications of that, as another commissioner was saying, at the time, I really appreciated that it was being separated because it felt overwhelming to have to consider all of this stuff at the same time. And so I understand why it was done that way. But in retrospect, you know, now that I've been through all this material, I see that differently. I'm not sure I would have voted the same way, but anyway, that, just for, you know, it's water under the bridge. A couple, let's see, also, a couple of random thoughts. One is, I came across probably, everybody knows about this and I just found it, but I, I guess there's some kind of a, sort of a, a challenge, two things. One, from the Department of Energy and also from the White House, some kinds of sort of challenges for us to be, to become carbon neutral for health, specifically for healthcare. So I guess those are things that can be opted into, and I don't know if those have been considered. But I think that aims for the same kind of effect, you know, that, that, you know, our citizens want. The other random thought has to do with this process. You know, as I was saying before, we didn't, you know, we're not, this, citizens weren't involved in the process of evaluating, that, that was an NIH decision to evaluate whether they could do something with their current campus, and that was not something that we had to stay in. And neither was, you know, looking for sites for a new hospital. But the, the way the process goes is that, you know, they, you know, that was, those decisions were probably made years ago. And meanwhile, millions of dollars are spent to get to this point, to have a specific plan going forward and to have a, you know, to do all this work going forward. So it is really, it's really intimidating, you know, when you know somebody has put this much effort and money into something, and then you're, you know, then you're evaluating it at this point. So I'm just throwing that, that question out there, and I know that weighs heavily on all the commissioners. And one other thought that a comment reminded me of here, this is actually very much in favor of the, of the new hospital. I, I think this is a consideration, especially should this go forward, is that building a new hospital, a new hospital is going to be, have a lower carbon footprint than the old hospital. It just is. It's newer, it's going to use new technology. It's, it's just, it's just going to be better. It could be enormously better. I mean, as we've seen in the report, it's anticipated that, you know, use less water, so on and so forth. So it's already, a new hospital's already going to be, have a lower carbon footprint than the old hospital. The other thing about the old hospital site is I got interested in this project early on because I was thinking about the old hospital, what's going to happen to it and, and what's important about that. Now, there is in the development agreement a commitment to work with the community and the city and on, on redevelopment of that site. So there is a, a really strong opportunity for the community to be involved in that process. And chances are, because those will be redeveloped and repurposed, that they will become much more efficient, sustainable projects. So I, I see on the horizon, even though there could be, you know, sort of would, would possibly be this period of, you know, where it's just kind of empties out and kind of depressing, that it, it could be very exciting, become a very exciting part of Flagstaff too, and it could become, you know, the heart of a sustainability area. So I, I see that as a, I, I see that actually as a really strong positive for this project. So I didn't want to neglect to mention that because I, I, that, that seems very possible too.
Chair, may I clarify one thing?
Yes.
I just, I heard a couple of comments about the transportation improvements and the city bearing part of the cost. And I just wanted to make sure, I know the DA's been provided to you very recently, but in the development agreement, NIH is responsible to mitigate all of the transportation improvements identified in the traffic impact analysis. So that is part of the package that is being provided right now. It shows NIH bearing full cost for all of those transportation improvements. Just wanted to make sure we were clear.
But that doesn't include public transportation to the site, correct?
Not transit, you're correct. The transportation improvements identified in the impact analysis. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. I, I think I was clear that, that the, the traffic things are mitigations are covered, but I was referring specifically to public transit. So I guess we're at a point where we could make a motion. And we'll, we can talk about it more. We have, we should start with the, let's see, the first motion is the specific plan?
Yeah.
So.
I want to help you with the second one.
Okay.
The concept.
Okay. Actually, so, yeah.
So I cannot support the findings described in the zoning code and would like to make a motion. Personally, I'd like to make a motion to postpone, but I've been, it's been suggested that we deny instead of postpone. PZ 20, I have the wrong thing written down. Specifically, I feel that the proposed amendment is not consistent with the goals of the general plan and the applicable specific plans. You know, again, I agree with you, Marie, about that it's probably more sustainable than the hospital is now, but it still doesn't have that carbon neutrality, doesn't meet the carbon neutrality by 2030. I feel like part of that is not only the, a project reduction for increase in greenhouse gas emissions, but, you know, the urban sprawl and the transportation carbon emissions that will occur. And I also feel that the hospital's transportation study did not include times when Fort Tuthil has events and what the traffic will be during those busy times. I feel like the staff report states that it's, that accessible and convenient transportation to the new hospital remains an undressed service, and it'll, again, the dependency on auto travel for the majority of Flagstaff residents and even those coming from out of Flagstaff. It just, concerns remain about how underserved members of our community will access the hospital and how that relocation can affect greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. I feel that the proposed amendment is detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, and convenience and welfare of the community with the location that they've chosen. That could mean increased amount of times for people within Flagstaff to get to the hospital, especially some of those areas that, you know, when Snow Bowl has, when skiing is active at Snow Bowl and somebody has an accident, they already have like 30 minutes to the hospital because of the traffic on 180. And that's just going to be almost an hour for them during that traffic with, you know, 180 and then down to the hospital. I feel that the affected site is physically unsuitable in terms of the design, shape, and size with the operating characteristics and provision of public and emergency access. The Pro's new hospital is designed to be 160 feet tall and seven stories, which I don't think is the best interest in our community. This exceeds even, you know, those building heights where the community objected formerly, and it would require stress on the city's fire department or on taxation for the city's fire department. And, you know, my suggestion would be to the hospital to consider a different plan and lower the building height that could serve the public in the same way. Again, I'd like to see a scaled down project. So that's my recommendation is to deny PZ 21 0012601.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny this first case.
And just a clarification, Chair, it's a, a motion to forward to council with a recommendation for denial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Forward to council with a recommendation to deny.
Do we have a second?
I was going to ask, does it have to be a second based on all of the things that you said?
No, I think it's, she, I think you, you were giving your reasons.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So that, that could be recorded, but it doesn't have to be for just my things.
So discussion on this, on the motion. I, I would, I, so I, I am not inclined to vote against a hospital. I want to vote for a hospital. But the reason I think I want to vote to deny this is, I guess I kind of see this, we'll see if this is true or not. I think chances are pretty good this is going to go through council. I think that council's worked with the applicant quite a lot on this. And I guess what I tend to see this process is, I mean, is, it's kind of, it's like a, it's sort of like a testing, a test case, is to see what, I, I mean, I very much doubt if we, if we do pass this motion, I very much doubt that the applicant is just going to say, well, bring exactly the same case to council. I imagine that, you know, they'll try to address things. I imagine that, I guess I, I have no reason to think that the applicant is not interested in making the best application they can and to address, you know, all of the issues. I think that they're aware of the issues. So it's really kind of a, it's a weird, it's a weird support of this motion because I do support the hospital, and I support a new hospital. But it's my, my, the findings that I feel that I can't make do have to do with, I would say generally, some of the sustainability policies and goals, and also the, the public transportation.
So I would have to completely disagree. I, I think in the end, I have to trust staff. Staff have had far more time reviewing this than we have, and they believe it's in substantial conformance with the required findings. And I, I just, I can't find myself saying, no, Steph, you guys are wrong. I feel like they've had the time, they've had the energy. So I, I would vote no on this one. I, I think, yeah, we need to support a hospital, but maybe the only way to get a hospital done is to build this larger project around it to make it affordable. I don't, I don't know. But I am not in favor of this motion.
I'll go next. I think that the items that, well, that I have issues with are things that are going to be up to a discussion in city council. I think the things that I have problems with, and even some of the things that we've discussed here are beyond our purview and are going to end up needing to be discussed at the council level. So what I would have preferred was that we vote to move it forward with a recommendation, but with conditions with regard to funding issues, further sustainability asks, things like that. But I understand on your motion, you have far more issues with the findings, which you have every right to, and I completely understand. But I would also vote no on this motion for those reasons, because I'd rather see us giving council recommendations on what we have had issues and discussion about.
And that was why originally I had wanted to. And that was why originally I had wanted to postpone sending this to council altogether so that those issues could be resolved, but the applicant would rather us deny or approve. And so my, my thought is that we send it to council with the denial and then they can have those discussions. I mean, they still get to go to council and present to council, so.
Right, and it, you know, and I think that's sometimes the misunderstanding is regardless on how we vote, it's going to council. You know, postponing it or asking council to table once it gets to them until some of these questions are answered or the RACE grant is awarded or some of these unknowns are figured out, you know, but that will be up to them too, so.
I, I also wanted to state that, yeah, I'm for a hospital. I mean, I'm not against a hospital, but I think there's problems with meeting all the findings on my part.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, it's weird because I feel like even, even up to this moment, I feel like I can go either way on this. And I guess the, the reason that I tend to lean towards denying it is just to make the point that I hear, so, you know, the, the commission, the reason for commissions is to have that citizen presence on these city decisions. And so I feel, you know, to, to some extent, my aim is to represent, you know, the citizens' perspective, point of, point of view, and I hear, you know, a very strong sentiment that we need to take this issue of climate change really seriously and figure out how to do it. And there are so many times I've sat on these, listened to these cases and I hear things come by and it's always this sort of incremental thing like, well, yeah, I mean, this is going to add to the waste stream. Oh, yeah, this is going to add to this and that, but, you know, what are you going to do? It meets the findings and so on and so forth, and that's what you have to decide. So it's just, it's just really hard to figure out where does the rubber meet the road when it comes to climate change? So how do you decide on it? So I feel, that's, that's why, I mean, there are a lot of things I admire about this project. And it could potentially be, you know, really fantastic and, and I think it's probably more likely that it will go than not go. But I feel like this is just a way for me to register that sentiment from, you know, my fellow citizens about the importance of finding ways to really significantly impact climate change.
I, I think the majority of the objections we had were based upon climate change. I think we could all agree to that. But again, the city doesn't require carbon neutrality on a specific project. So why would we require that on this one? Why would we deny it based upon something that's not actually required?
Well, I'm not sure that I agree that it is not required. I, I think that, you know, this gets into a whole discussion about the regional plan and how the goals and policies are written. I mean, you know, Sarah's in the middle of, of working on a new regional plan and I'm very much, I mean, when I, sometimes when I look through these goals and policies, I think this can be anything you want it to be, you know, these goals and policies. They, they're really general. And especially when it comes to, you know, sometimes it's just so general, it's just like, it's, why even put it down? It just doesn't have that much meaning. So I mean, I, I, hopefully Sarah is looking at those kinds of things when that was, as we develop a new regional plan, something that, you know, really has meaning for people or has more specific meaning for people. But, you know, there are things, I think, goals and policies. But yeah, when it comes to things like, you know, having efficiencies, you know, energy efficiencies and things like that, yeah, I think, I think that this, this application meets all of those requirements and exceeds some of others. So, but I think that there is a kind of a foundational thing having to do with how the city develops. And that's, so, that's more philosophical to me, but that's the part that I'm referring to.
And I would say that with past commissioners on P and Z in the last three and a half years I've been on the council, I won't say it's come up as carbon neutrality, but it's come up as sustainability. And we've asked those questions of other projects as well. I, I don't think this is a one-time ask. I think we've asked those to other projects. This is a huge project. This is a, you know, I hate, I'm not, I'm going to point Bob because our last thing that we approved was the park, I forget what it's called. Yeah, Puttec. And, you know, we didn't specifically address that, but we're, you know, that, that was looking at a small use. We're looking at a huge, a huge facility. It's bigger than anything that's probably happened in the last, I don't know, 10, 20 years in flagstaff? I'm going to, I think. So that's part of my issue is, is that we do have to look at this. This is a huge scale. This is not, you know, small. And when we've looked at apartment units and we looked at housing, we have talked about sustainability in the past, so.
But where does size get mentioned in our requirements? Where do we say, if you're above a certain size, you must be carbon neutral? But if you're below a certain size, yeah, what's it matter?
I don't think we've done that. I think this is brand new and, you know, as I said, we have questioned people over sustainability. I don't know that we've ever, and some, well, I could say some commissioners have talked about carbon neutrality to those builders. So I don't think it's just about size. I think we have done that in the past with past commissioners.
I don't think that my, I, I don't think that my, the finding I can't, I, I, that I'm referring to is about carbon neutrality because like I was saying in my comments, I, I don't know what, I don't know what I'd be asking for. What am I asking for, you know? Tell me what your supply chain's going to be? I mean, I, I can't evaluate those things. And, you know, I, I think, so that's why I guess it's not so much a carbon neutrality goal or, you know, that I'm referring to, objective that I'm referring to. It's more, it's more the notion of how do we, how does the city develop? You know, how do we move forward? How, how do we develop things? This is a, this is, it, it, the size matters because, and we already voted to make it a regional activity center. So that's done. But it's, it's, you know, it's, it's creating a large development area that's going to be on the, you know, reaching out to the very edge of our boundaries. So that's where I think the size becomes significant. And a lot of things are going to develop around this, you know? Well, it was designated in the regional plan as an activity center anyway, but as a neighborhood activity center before we, before we all changed that and before city council changed that. But, so it was going to develop people on that land. And people are going to cut down trees and all of those things are going to happen probably. But this is a pretty high impact, I think, use. So I guess that's where I think the size is a factor.
So considering that this is the specific plan that we're talking about, it's not necessarily the buildings, even though there's guidelines for the buildings within it, the specific plan. So if, just, I'm just kind of summarizing your thoughts. It's more of the location and the size and the edge of town. That's the urban sprawl that's affecting your, your thoughts on the sustainability because of those reasons.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments they want to make on that? Please.
So I, like everyone else would like a new hospital. I think, you know, that that is not, we're not saying we don't want good healthcare in flagstaff. So I, I think that, that what I would really, in my mind, this is going to go to council regardless, right? It's either going to be a recommendation to approve or deny. What I would like to put on the record for council to consider is that, one, you know, a couple of meetings ago, I asked for basically a return on investment analysis on, you know, so, so part of this, having a hos, having hotels, having retail shops, those types of things are going to bring flagstaff more sales tax revenue. Will that offset the, the investment that we need to make as citizens to, you know, build half the fire station? That, that's all I'm asking for is just, just a simple, well, I, I think it's simple because I'm an accountant, an analysis on that. And then the other thing that I would like council to address is, is the, the public transportation to the hospital. I do think that that is important. You know, even as, as we all age, maybe we won't have someone who can drive us and we do need to take the bus to the hospital or, you know, so there's a lot of considerations around the, the transit that I would like addressed as well.
Any more comments before we take a vote?
I'll just, I'll just add in, just to kind of tag on to your comments. So like within the staff report for the specific plan, you know, there was mention that the Health Village could generate an estimated 39.1 million in sales tax, board and beverage tax, property taxes, state, state shared revenues to the city of Flagstaff over the next 23 years. But if you take that 39.1 million and divide it by 23 years, it comes out to an average of 1.7 million. But the fire operating and maintenance alone was 2.4 million. Now, they've come up with some of the funding, but still 1.4 million is undetermined on how they would pay for that. So, you know, it just, it seems like there's a lot of squeaking by.
This is great to hear everybody's opinion. I don't know if it's helping me much, as much as I hoped it would, but yeah. Any, anything else here? We should probably vote on this motion if we're done talking about it. So we have a motion to deny the, this, this first case for the specific plan or to deny, to make a recommendation for denial to council. Sorry, just getting above ourselves here. And so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, or nay.
Yeah. Nay. Did we all vote? It was four to two? Okay, so that motion passed. I didn't hear, oh, everybody. All right?
Chair, would it be possible to do a roll call vote? I'm not sure that I got the same numbers.
Yeah, I wasn't sure I heard too. Well, I think she's going to call.
Marie?
Aye.
Bob Harris?
Aye.
Carol Mandino?
Aye.
Ian Sharp?
No.
Marshall Camp?
Aye.
Mary Norton?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion on the concept zoning map amendment? So again, this would be to rezone those particular portions of the property that would be in phase one.
And the difference on this one is just that we're changing the zoning.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I, I get, this is confusing because could we, could we have approved the, the specific plan but not approve the zoning? Could we had, could we approve the zoning but not approve the specific plan?
Yes, but their development proposal doesn't work without the two of them. So the specific plan, for example, proves the building height, the, and sets specific standards. It has all of the conditions for the, that particular zone. So there are limitations put on that zone that are found within the specific. If you found them each independently supportable, it doesn't, it doesn't support any H's request, though.
So I, oh, I'm, I, I guess where I'm struggling is that I, I didn't necessarily disagree with the zoning. I'm, I'm concerned about the financial implications and the transit. So that's where I'm, if I'm taking this just on its, its own, it's just about the zoning.
Good point, yeah.
But I think they're so interrelated that we really should treat them the same because we really can't change the zoning on a parcel that doesn't have some oversight that was provided by the development agreement and the specific plan. So as much as I, you know, hate to see another deny motion come forward, it's almost like we have to, in my eyes.
Well, I don't think so. I mean, I, I mean, I, I think you could have an independent opinion about it. And also remember, we're making a recommendation to council. And so that, that's someplace where the subtlety could make a difference, I think. Yeah, Tiffany?
Just to be more specific, the specific plan is what required impact analyses on the fire department. It's what required the economic development impact analysis, police and fire schools. The rezoning is what requires the transportation impact analysis, is what requires the water sewer impact analysis, is what required the drainage impact analysis. So the infrastructure analysis is really tied to the rezoning and those other community service analysis are tied to the specific plan. Just for a point of clarification.
So does that mean like the, all the infrastructure, the roads and the expansion of Beulah that is, that is tied most specifically to the rezoning?
That's correct.
I guess where I'm confused is if you don't have the specific plan, what does the zoning gain?
Nothing.
Chair, if I may, I, I would just, I would treat the applications independently. And so I would make your motions separately based on the separate application. And when we get to council, we'll have time to talk to the applicant. We'll talk to city council. Council will have the opportunity to weigh in and we can, you know, make sense of it. I think it would be more helpful to provide your independent evaluation of the two applications and we'll sort it out at council.
Do you want me to try to make a motion?
Sure.
We'll take a stab at it.
Yeah, if you don't, then I'd be willing to, yeah.
Okay. I move that we, sorry, recommend to move forward with approval, but with some considerations to council. PZ dash 21 dash 00126 dash 02. The considerations that I would like council to weigh is the tabling of a rezoning approval until the funding for the RACE grant has been granted and the funding has been identified for the fire department, the city sites. Sorry to make a mess of that, but I think you see where I'm going. It's that I wish, when it got to them, that they will evaluate the funding sources and wait until the RACE grant has been awarded.
So my question about that motion would be, so to ask council to consider something is sort of a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a request. It's, is, is it really part of the motion? Can it be part of the motion? Or is that a request?
Yeah, it's not formally part of the motion. The motion is a recommendation to forward the request for the rezoning to council with a recommendation for approval. But we, when
the request for the rezoning to council with a recommendation for approval, but we, when we go to council, we'll make sure that we let council know what the concerns of the commission are, and, and what the commission would like to see council address. So I took that as direction for staff to make sure that those requests were conveyed to council.
Okay, I'm fine with it reading that way.
Okay, and then, but basically, anything that we're saying tonight, we're, as individually, we're, we're making, this is, these are kind of requests of council, I mean, we are making ours, I mean, is there like a difference between, you know, is there a difference between some kind of formal, you know, that council formally considers something versus, you know, everything they've heard tonight?
So I think if it was more formal, it would be the emotion to forward the request for the zoning map amendment to council with a recommendation for approval, with the conditions identified by staff, and with the additional conditions that council consider the additional funding. I will tell you, council's going to consider the funding for fire, I think if, if the request to table until the RACE grant decision is made, we can definitely convey that to council. Practically speaking, I don't know that it makes a huge impact, but however the commission would like to proceed, it can. I will just note, there is a motion on the table, so we will need a second before discussion.
Yes, okay. So do we have a second?
And Tiffany would like me to clarify that it's, the motion is for, to forward the zoning map amendment application to council with the recommendation for approval, with the conditions included by staff in the March 22nd report, which has that additional condition.
Okay.
Is that the motion?
So we're clear on that. So do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. All right, so discussion on that.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell me who seconded that? I was looking down. Thank you.
Oh, that was Marshall. Yeah. So again, I, I, I guess I, I'm inclined to vote against this motion because it doesn't make sense for me to, especially because the concerns I have, the findings that I have difficulty making, probably fall even more within the concept map amendment motion than in the specific plan thing. But the same, same thoughts I have regarding why I'm doing it apply in this case, so that's kind of, but that's just what kind of logically makes sense to me. So any other thoughts?
I can agree with that statement as well. With what you've said, I would agree with that.
Any other discussion on the motion?
No, admittedly, it's confusing because of what we've already voted on, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, no, I mean, I think it's, I think it's good, I mean, you know, these subtleties make a difference to council, I think. So the motion is to forward the concept map amendment, map amendment to council for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. You probably want to do another roll call, right?
Marie Jones.
Uh, nay.
Bob Harris.
Aye.
Carol Mendino.
Nay.
Ian Sharp.
Aye.
Marshall Camp.
Aye.
Mary Norton.
Aye.
So, so we don't have a result? We have a tie?
So now you need to make the opposite motion?
Okay.
A, a tie is an automatic denial.
Ah. Yes, I know, I know that much is true, but I didn't realize that a tie was a denial. I thought maybe there was some kind of sneaky thing, we could get out of here, no, okay.
But as we've learned in the past, you still need to make the opposite motion.
Yes. Okay, well, I'll jump into the breach then, and make a motion to forward the concept plan amendment to, for the case, whatever it is. I don't have it in front of me. It would be PZ-21-00126-02, for, to forward this to city council for denial, with a recommendation for denial. No, we did it for approval.
I second the motion.
A question, so if we ended up in another tie, are we in the same situation? We need to break this tie?
It would be awesome if we could break this tie.
Got it.
All right. Any discussion? This is about denial, recommend that make your, for denial. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those against the motion, please say nay.
Nay.
All right. Okay, Tiffany, can we go home? I, I just, just want to appreciate the, all the work that went into this, both from the applicant and from staff. It's, this has been a huge project, and just a tremendous amount of work.
I agree. And I think there are things that can be done, and that it could move forward in the future, but there are things that need to happen.
So there was a little piece of housekeeping that had to do with minutes from, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, is it? No, it's okay. All right, so that's, that's the end of the public hearing. Is there anything that you guys need to talk to us about, or vice versa?
I think if we want to discuss doing this on a regular basis, in person with this hybrid, so maybe we could get a nod from the commission that you'd be interested in doing more in-person slash hybrid meetings, then we can, we can plan, even next week, I can look into the calendar, make sure we have the room, and maybe we can do this again next Wednesday.
I much prefer in-person, it's a lot easier.
I agree, and we're meeting again next Thursday, huh?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes.
It's Wednesday.
And we are, we are meeting for sure, we have an agenda?
We do. But remote would still be available for next Wednesday? Yes. I just, I would hate to have staff here presenting to an empty room, so knowing that you guys would be interested in being present is what I ask, so. I, I wouldn't be in-person, so I would be remote, so I just want to make sure that was still available. Great. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Do you want to adjourn?
Yes, we're adjourned.